Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting, Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. We're going to go and get started this morning. Don't have a super long agenda, but we do have the people's business to take care of. If you would let stand and go invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father, we thank you today for this day you've given us. We do not take lightly, Lord, the ability, the responsibility that you've given to each and every one of us. Father, we thank you, Lord, for prudence and understanding today. Thank you for wisdom and discretion. We believe you that we receive all these things from you because we ask for them now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So Attorney General Shur, you were saying that there was something we need to add to the agenda under your report?
Yes, sir. My request of the Board, consider hiring an engineer, Jack Husman's, to provide an engineering analysis and report to the Board to rebut the claims that are being made by two individuals at Alligator Point that the recent construction of a bike path or multi-use path has caused, from their viewpoints, significant damage to their property and two seawalls. So, Dewberry is unable to provide those services. I've already checked with them. And so now I've asked Jack Husman's to consider providing those services. He said that he would and that the fee for doing that is $6,500. He sent me that estimate, I think it was Wednesday of last week sometime, because we had a phone conference Wednesday morning. It got caught up in my spam folder and I didn't catch, didn't even check my spam over the holidays until probably, not only sometime Friday, maybe Saturday. So I just figured I'd bring it up this morning verbally. If the Board wants to hold off on the next meeting, it's not like we're on a huge time. I'm just ready to move this ball forward if we can.
Pleasure to the Board. Do you want to add this request or do you want to approve the agenda as it was presented?
So move.
I'll say.
We're moving to add the request or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve adding this request and approving the agenda by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Now we're going to pay the county's bills.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. And as I understand, for Mr. Merle, there were no requests for public comment. Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, Commissioner, I can. And you're right, there were no public comments submitted either in the room or virtually, or basically.
Okay. All right, so we go next to Department Director of Sports, Mr. Howard Neighbors. Howard Winston, you in here, how you doing?
Doing good, Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Doing good.
I hope all y'all had a happy new year and want to welcome the new Commissioner, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Welcome. And other than that, we got most of my crew back this morning. Half of them been out hunting for the last week, week and a half, so. We got a lot of work to do, a lot of litter pickup and grading and driveway shoulders. It's everything kind of messed up by the rain that we've had. We've got a lot more rain coming tomorrow, so. I don't know. But that's all I got for the Board.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Neighbors?
Just one thing. Howard, thank you for going on out there and putting some more signs out there at the county line. That was a bad problem.
It's still got water on that road too, in that area, so.
You're gonna have, yeah, you're gonna have the water out there until they get out of there.
Yeah, and open it up.
Because they got both ends stopped up.
Yes, ma'am.
Be mindful of it and with the rain coming tomorrow and then again on Saturday and then again one day next week, you're gonna have rainwater coming through there again, so.
I think so, like 90%, 86% tomorrow, tomorrow night, so. Have a weekend rain, rain, so.
In pain, we don't have very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something. Mr. Howard, I'm gonna send you, Ms. Virginia, an email later on. I've got a couple of signs in my district that need to be replaced because they faded. And some, you mentioned shoulder work and you may have already on the list what I'm gonna ask you to fill or fix, so. But I'll send you an email later on today or tomorrow about the concerns.
Okay, I know we have some complaints on the roads which, I don't think you'll disagree, but it's hickory dill, especially hickory dill, especially where the cover's at, it's in pretty, pretty bad shape.
Thank you.
Mr. Neighbors, thank you. Thank y'all for everything you do.
You're welcome. And I don't know if DeWitt sent y'all an email or nothing, but he's out, he's not feeling well today, so.
Okay. Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, New Year.
No action item, but I want to let you know that we hired Alfred Allen for parking wreck and also we had to terminate one in parking wreck. We have another position there and have one and two in solid waste we're trying to fill.
We currently have some that are out, being advertised to be field correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I have.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Davis?
I do. Fonda, we're gonna have to do something because even though you took the carcass containers out.
Yes, ma'am.
They're still throwing the carcasses out and like the big eagles come down and swoop down there and get it and drop it on the highway and all, so we're gonna have to figure something out with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Sanders, because I've got a concern, actually this morning before the meeting, about, I guess, the deer carcass containers have been removed north of Carabelle?
That's one of our.
Yeah. Is there a reason why?
Yes, ma'am. You know, I reported to you all that the employees was getting sick and also getting calls and complaint. They're not utilizing the dumps. They, even though they was out there, they still putting it on the ground. So, and it's.
We need to get a.
Figure out a way to fix that problem. I know we can't help people from doing something they're not supposed to, but then it's bad to not have that capability too, you know, to be able to.
Well, and if memory serves me right, we did that carcass container because people were throwing the carcasses in the river and we're getting a lot of complaints and through Keith Franklin County Beautiful Way back then too. And, but the container was bear proof, we're trying to be bear proof, but it never was bear proof because it always tore into it, scattered that out. But it's many deer and hog that's being killed. We need to do something and we may have to put it at a different location.
Okay.
Up 67 maybe, away from everybody. But then when you do that, then it's gonna entice the abuse of it then still, so we need to do something. Let's get together and let's talk about it and see what we can do, Fonda.
Okay. Again, too, Commissioner, I mean, we got to where we was having the knuckle boom trucks to go pick them up and they just come back in, tell them that it's making them sick, so.
If it's bad because you had to drive by it, I mean, I think that we're gonna have to do something or we're gonna have those same. People that complained about the carcasses in the river being back up here. We had it, A&amp;T, FWC has it in their brochure that Franklin County is providing a carcass container, so. We're gonna have to work out, see what we can do, okay?
Okay.
Commissioner Sanders, this all was in place where I came in permission. Does FWC help us in any way with these containers?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
So what? Doesn't matter what they got in their brochure. That falls under them, I would think. Don't people have to get a hunting license from them?
Yeah. Maybe they need, maybe they need to charge a dollar extra or something toward a carcass container. Maybe they need to do something like that.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we could reach out to them. I don't know who's in charge of the hunting aspect of it, so. Does anybody know who the, I'll call the guy.
John Kramer.
I'll call John. I'll call John and see.
But I've talked to him before because it's been an ongoing problem in northern Carabelle, so.
Well, I've had people complain come to where I work and ask me about it, yeah, at the airport and different ones.
The airport was real bad.
Why did y'all take them away? There's reasons, I'm sure.
Because they wouldn't use it. I mean, I beat on this horse last year.
Yep, sure did.
You got the container sitting right there and then dunk them all around.
That's the way they do it.
I'm not saying all of them, but you know the deal.
They don't take them one or two, though.
And they still, they still throw them in the creeks. They still throw the carcasses in the creek, so we'll figure something out. It may not be in time for hunting season to be able, because we've got, I think we've got about a month left of hunting season, so.
Well, I'm sure that Mr. John Kramer might not be the one, but I'm sure he can get us in the right direction, Commissioner Ward. Anything else for Mr. Davis while he's here? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Thank y'all for everything you do.
All right, thank y'all for your support.
Ms. Amanda? Sorry. I was thinking Amy and I knew that was not right. I'm sorry. I was having a mind block.
It's still early in the beginning of the year. I hope y'all had a happy holiday and happy new year. I have no action items for you this morning. Luckily, it's been a nice, quiet month and hopefully it stays that way this month.
We only get a few quiet months out of the year, right?
Yeah, I think we've earned a little bit.
Does anyone have any questions for emergency management this morning? Ms. Amanda, thank you. Thank y'all for everything you do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Polis is not here, so if you have any questions, Commissioners, I'm sure if we can either contact Mr. Polis directly or through Mr. Merle. Mr. Eric Lovestrand?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning and welcome aboard Commissioner Curren. And I don't have any action items in my report for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about what I've reported on over this past month.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Chairman, thank you for everything y'all do. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You're having a good first day of the, second day of the new year.
We're gonna get there, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Whitney Roundtree, Library Director? Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year to you all.
Thank you.
No action items. As far as informational items, the libraries will be closed Monday, January 15th in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. The Friends are getting ready to host their annual Super Celebration. It's the soup, bread, and book sale fundraiser. East Points will be held January 20th and Carabelle's will be February 3rd. We'll have food and books and live music, so we hope everyone will come out and join us. We'll be bringing back some old programs and starting some new ones this year and the staff and I, we're just looking forward to another year at the library. Any questions for me?
We're about to find out. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Whitney? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything y'all do on behalf of the residents and the children in our communities. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ted Mossdeller, Inter Airport Manager?
Good morning, all. Happy New Year. I have no action items this morning unless you have something for me, if you have my report. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners, Mr. Ted?
I just got one.
Yes, sir.
With the roof over the FBO.
Yes, sir.
Complex, what? Could you explain that real quick, please?
John, our engineer, came back a couple of weeks ago and said that there was a problem with us doing what we had planned, which was to replace the roof completely with the insulation underneath it also. And he said that would trigger a major overhaul of the entire building. So at this time, I don't think we want that. It's up to you guys. But he came back with suggestion of what we looked into some, a couple of years ago, a year or so ago, of a spray stuff to go over the roof. Of course, you repair the damaged area that we have it rusted out and spray this stuff on. There's a kind of a fibrous plastic type flexible sealant. That's a suggestion at this point.
Okay, I'm just, what's got me confused is it's a metal building.
It's a metal roof. Yes, sir.
But we can't do any roof repair to it? I mean, is the insulation sprayed on from the inside?
The insulation is a fiberglass bat type insulation for typical metal building. As far as the metal is concerned, we've replaced it over the years, patched it and patched it and patched it and it's now leaking again. We can't seem to find someone who can really fix it rather than patch it, so.
Okay, I was just, you know.
We're open for suggestions.
You know, obviously, you think you can get a roof repaired or replaced.
We have.
And whenever I seen the insulation, I was kind of confused about what was, you know, if something had been sprayed, you know, with a closed cell foam or something like that and therefore we couldn't replace the metal without it being a big project. It just seemed kind of weird that, you know, I'm not saying that roof is a small thing by any means, because I think I'm gonna have to put one on my house.
Yes, sir.
And it's costly, but, I mean, you can do it.
Yes, sir. We have discussed spray on, pulling down the old fiberglass bats, which is falling down in places. It just looks bad and not doing its job, of course, when it's falling down like that. But the, this project was to replace everything and it's a problem if we try to do that because the rest of the building is, I don't think we could afford it at the moment with the other projects going on.
Ms. Erin?
Ted, can we get John Collins here to actually outline what different options are?
Well, that was his. It was his suggestion.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, we can try to get him at the next meeting or perhaps the first meeting in February to discuss what the different options are for you.
Because I don't know, I know Mr. Ted might not know the answer to this question because that's a lot to put on anybody on the spot, but is it, and we can ask Mr. Collins, is it because it's meeting a certain dollar threshold or is it something we need to do in stages to be able to get it done? Or is it, you know, a bidding problem? You know what I mean? There's several things that might be going on that we can clarify because I'm sure there's a way to replace a roof on the FBO building.
Yes, sir. Well, the deal was we can repair it, but we can't replace it. It doesn't make sense to me, but that's what he brought up. Said it would trigger an entire overhaul of the entire building, which would trigger ADA stuff and things we don't have now that we need.
Might be where we wind up for it anyway. Anything else, Commissioners?
I have something, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Ted?
Yes, sir.
On your item L, you said, we just reported that the T-hanger roof is leaking again. Skipping the sentence, I have requested of Jason Fisher roofing again for repair.
Yes, sir. I have not heard back from him.
That was my question.
No, sir, I have not heard back.
How many attempts has it been?
I've tried to call him a couple of times. I've left messages, bond message. I don't know if he's been hunting or what the problem is. Ms. Erin, have you heard anything from Jason?
I have not tried to contact him, Ted, yet.
Yeah.
I wasn't in the loop.
Well, I tried directly.
Okay.
One question on this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
When did you try to reach out to Fisher?
It's been over a week now.
Okay, so it was kind of during the holidays?
It could be. He's been in the woods with a lot of other people.
Can I just say something? Apparently, Ms. Erin don't know anything about it and anything that we do, considering money and stuff like that, you need to know something about it, so y'all need to keep her in the loop.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to get up with Jason afterwards too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Moss? Mr. Ted, thank you.
Thank you and happy new year, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, Mr. Ted.
Ms. Ruffin, do you want to do your report?
Oh, yeah.
Because the other thing is scheduled for 9:30.
Okay. Wow, moving fast.
What we're here for. It may have been.
Okay. First item on my report is the Engineering Services Contract. At the December 5th meeting, the Board authorized staff to begin contract negotiations with the highest ranked firm, Dewberry Engineers. Attached is a services contract and schedule of rates. For project services, the rate schedule may be subject to review by various granting agencies and will require a. For project services, the rate schedule may be subject to review by various granting agencies and will require additional approval from the board for specific task orders, which will outline the scope of services, the amount, and the required completion date. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached general services contract with Dewberry Engineers.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion?
I have something. For a year's contract, or what? We're gonna go a year-to-year contract, or how we're gonna do it?
It's actually a continuing services contract, which is an initial three-year period, or initial two or three, can't remember. I wrote, I did that one and the auditor services con- RFQ at the same time, so, um, it's either a two-year contract or a three-year contract, uh, with one renewal period, uh, for up to six years total.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I don't wanna lock ourselves in on engineering services.
No.
When we're get, starting to get more and more people in here with engineering services provided, so.
And it does have the standard, uh, mounts that, you know, a lot of our contracts have.
I just wanna make sure that we don't tie ourselves in to just one company.
Mr. Chairman, a question. In the past, how long has our contract ran with engineers? Has it been, is that the same?
Yeah, it, it's actually been a, a, a pretty long process. Um, like with Dewberry, it actually spilled over from when it was Preble Rish. Um, yeah, so it, it has been a, a long time. So we are trying to get our contracts to where there's a standard renewal period on all of them.
Right.
Is it, is there a standard that we should go by as far as sending this back out every year, every two years, every three? Or is it just kinda up in the air for us to decide?
I mean, really, for engineering services contracts as well, and as well as auditors as well, you kind of want a, a little bit longer duration than just a standard, you know, two-year period or one-year period, because a lot of times your projects span multiple years. Um, and the same with auditing services, where it does take them a little while to, you know, kinda get into the swing of things.
It, it's up to the board's discretion, that they want.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep. I mean, actually, most of the FDOT contracts as well, we are still gonna have to go out for RFQ anyway. So this is more of for, um, just your services that you're able to handle internally, um, or if certain projects fall below a certain threshold.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, next action item is item number three. The county has been moving forward with the design and environmental permitting for the Lanark EMS station. As part of the civil engineering and geotech work, approximately six bore holes were drilled at the initial proposed site adjacent to the Lanark St. James Volunteer Fire Department. Unfortunately, when the bore samples were done as part of the geotech work, even the seemingly non-wetlands areas of the site, which is very high elevation, dry soil, revealed a water table only several feet below the surface. This site condition thus required a much larger, more shallow stormwater retention area, which could not be fit on the site without reducing the size of the proposed station. After receiving this bad news, Commissioner Sanders approached the city of Carabelle to see if they would consider donating an adjacent two-acre parcel directly to the west, which is farther from the wetlands area, whereas the station could still be sited near the fire department with direct access to Oak Street and Highway ninety-eight via Spring Road. The Carabelle Commission voted to proceed with the donation at their meeting in December, and the county and city attorneys, uh, are working through the details at this time. The EMS building's architectural plans are about sixty percent complete at this time, and to keep the project moving forward without delay, we suggest ordering the survey work on the new site, as it typically takes up to a month to get a survey completed. A draft rendering of the new site layout is attached. The board action to approve ordering the preliminary surveys of the new two-acre site, and special thanks to Commissioner Sanders and the city of Carabelle for keeping this project on track.
Well, and the thanks don't go to me. It goes to the city of Carabelle. They know our needs, and they met them. I mean, I, we've never had a problem working with the city of Carabelle on projects that we need to do. Uh, they've always been accommodating, wouldn't you say?
I, I, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think, I, I like to see the cities and the counties working together, because it's, they benefit the people of our communities. We share a community, and this is important. This is fire safety. So this is gonna benefit citizens in the city limits and, and everywhere else, so I, I'm appreciative of them. They've, yes, we've gotta, gotta keep that good working relationship with our cities, absolutely, to serve our citizens. So, yes, they've always been helpful, and working with them's been, um, a privilege.
I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and approve this, but also, I wanna include, uh, sending a letter to the city of Carabelle and thanking them for joining us in the, in the partnership, and that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
True.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward, to approve this, uh, board action, and to add to the request, sending a letter of appreciation to the city of Carabelle for the donation of the land. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do, do we need to do number two, or did you just skip over it?
We didn't do number two, but I didn't know if there was a reason for that or not.
Got ahead of myself there.
It's all good.
Um, item number two, letter of support for the opioid settlement funds. Uh, Northwest Florida Health Network is the state's designated agency to manage the region's share of Florida opioid settlement funds. It is our understanding that Franklin County is slated to receive a first-year allocation of about eighty thousand dollars, followed by smaller payments for five years. There are strict programmatic limitations on what the funds can be used for, and Sheriff Smith has requested support from the board for his efforts to purchase an X-ray machine at the local jail to prevent narcotics from reaching the inmate population. If this request is approved, the board could invite Northwest Florida Health Network and Sheriff Smith to, to a future meeting to discuss the settlement proceeds and the benefits of the screening technology. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the letter of support for the X-ray screening equipment at the sheriff's department pending review of the settlement agreement from Attorney Schuler.
So moved with comment.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amson. Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I, I do want them to come, because X-ray machine, to me, implies a lot of other things than just a regular, like a TSA machine where they screen, so I'm sure, I'm hoping they're gonna change that verbiage, 'cause, and it's the sheriff's office, I'm sure they, they've done their due diligence and researched in this, but anyway, that's, that's just my thoughts on that one. But I, I'll be looking forward to seeing what they have to present in terms of what they're requesting.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Okay, commissioners, next item is item number four, and it's just informational only. The Tourist Development Council will review and make their recommendation on the attached TDC spending plan at their January tenth meeting. After that meeting, the board will hold the public hearing before adoption of the plan at the January sixteenth commission meeting. In the attached, there was one minor correction to the budgeted amounts for the new curtains at Chapman Auditorium. The TDC shall review and make their recommendations, um, a final draft plan. It will be included on the agenda for the public hearing on January sixteen. Um, and board information, just miscellaneous project updates. Um, we do have the SGI parking improvements project beginning on the island, uh, starting today, um, and that's gonna be in between First and Chili Boulevard over there. Um, we also have, uh, the improvements at Vrooman Park. That's gonna be, uh, going full speed ahead at this point. Um, Womack Creek, it's, it's also, um, heavily under construction. Uh, we've got a lot of things going. Also, we met with FEMA representatives for the, um, SGI fishing pier access road, and it, from what we understand, we are this close to being obligated for repair of that road, so, um, should happen sometime this month.
Thank you, Ms. Erin.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something real quick. Um, at, at Vrooman Park, I've been going out there and kinda seeing the progress. I know with the holidays, things have kinda slowed, and they've had some issues with the inclement weather, but I wanna make sure that Dewberry or somebody's going out there to ensure that they're doing the proper drainage with the French drains and the swells. Um, and I have perfect, you know, great confidence in the, the crew that's out there working, but I just wanna make sure that everything is going according to plan and everything's being done according to plan, so that we don't have the issues that we had before, and have to go back and reinvent the wheel. So whoever, inspection-wise, survey-wise, not survey-wise, but I, I know what I'm looking at, but I don't know about the, the French drains or where they're supposed to go. I've looked at plans, but I'm not an engineer, so I just wanna make sure that there's some kinda continuity in terms of making sure everything's going the way it should.
Yep, yes, Dewberry is doing the inspection work on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Griffith? Thank you, Ms. Erin. Before we, uh, switch gears, I wanna mention, 'cause we don't have a report for Mr. Morone today. Uh, it, we had a request from Mr. Roy Baker from Opportunity, Florida. They wanna hold their quarterly board meeting here at the Armory on February twenty-first. Uh, Mr. Morone's checking in to make sure that date's not already been taken by somebody else. But if they do, I, I don't know if it would require just, uh, board direction, uh, to, to communicate with them to be able to do that, or, or what we need to do, but I did wanna mention it today. I know Mr. Morone's in the back. Michael, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir. I just wanted to make sure the board, uh, was, you guys are good with that, with having it. I don't really need a motion for that, just to, like you said, double-check the scheduling and, uh, get back to, to Roy or Richard, let him know. I just think with all they've been doing in the airport discussion we've been having, you know, all they're working on for us, I think it's a good thing to have it here, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I do, too, and I think it's only gonna help us. I, I wasn't at any of the meetings, but I know from talking to Richard Williams and, and Roy post some of the meetings they've had here recently in the county that they've been a part of, specifically about the airport, they are very enthused about the amount and the level of, uh, direction that things are going in. So, you know, they, they, uh, act like they really wanna help. They always have, but I think they've seen opportunity now to actually be able to help us some. So it's, it's, uh, how long we been a member of Opportunity, Florida, Commissioner? Been a while, haven't?
It's early two thousands.
So if we can get them to have their meeting here, and it can get us some more positivity for anybody they're dealing with or interacting with, it's all gonna benefit Franklin County and our residents, so.
Mr. Chairman, I can add to that. I, I actually, as one of the commissioners sit on that board, and I do attend the meetings. I don't go physically to the meetings, 'cause they're like in blunts, they have them in certain areas all over.
Yeah.
And it's like an hour meeting, and I don't really wanna drive two hours, four-hour round trip for an hour meeting, but I do listen to them, and they do bring up every meeting. They go around each county that they represent and discuss items that are important in that, uh, particular county. In the last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, they did mention Triumph and the issues that everybody's been having with Triumph, and they, they mentioned the meeting that y'all had in the upcoming meeting, in addition to the airport, uh, and, and the seafood industry. So I feel like they do help a whole lot, and I, I would love for them to come to be a part of our community, because all, everybody comes. Like, there'll be commissioners from other districts, uh, other counties that come. There'll be, uh, representatives from Opportunity, Florida. They have special guest speakers. The last, uh, speaker they had, uh, was a beekeeper from Calhoun County, and they discussed the lack of the Tupelo, uh, industry. So I, I, I really enjoy listening to their meetings. I think Commissioner, um, Commissioner Melander, uh, in Carabelle, the city of Carabelle is also on the board, so I, I would like for them to come to our community personally. That's just a little background on my, my dealings with Opportunity, Florida, since I sit on that board.
Yep.
And, Mr. Chairman, at one point, Opportunity, Florida wasn't helping all the counties. And now they, I, from what I understand, they've had a, like a changeover and a, a regrouping of things. And now they're pretty much representing everybody now. Um, but they would ask, and I know Mr. Schuler remembers, they would ask Franklin County if they can do an MOU for Liberty for, uh, uh, Georgia Pacific, or for Jackson County with Family Dollar Distribution and stuff. And they said, you need to do that, because Franklin County's gonna see a result of that, and we never did. So now, they're kinda tuned in to more so of what each individual county needs to have, so that's a good thing. Very good thing. If it's done right, Opportunity, Florida works good.
Yeah, and Mr. Mount, I don't know if anybody remembers, but a, a few, I don't know if it was last year, uh, Mr. Morone showed a video of a, of drone aerial footage of the airport for, um, I guess, advertisement purpose, purposes. Um, Opportunity, Florida was the one that, that did that, and took, took that and helped us out with that, so.
So it sounds like that's what we're gonna do, Mr. Morone.
Thank you so much.
So make sure that date's good, and we'll move forward.
All right. I'll let you guys know the next meeting. Confirm it. Let's confirm.
So, turn to Schuler, it is past nine thirty. Sir, we'll get back now to our public hearing group scheduled for nine thirty.
All right, sir. Uh, is... We are at the proper date, time, and place with the board to consider the request of the applicant for the board to abandon all of the alley that we've previously discussed. Uh, there's already been a public hearing. There's already been public comment. There was a request by, by Commissioner Croom to table this matter so that he could go over and do a site visit with me. Uh, so the board tabled that public hearing to a date, time, and place certain, which is this morning at this time and place. Uh, Commissioner Croom and I have, in the interim, made the site visit, and I have showed him the physical location of the request for the abandonment. Uh, my instructions from the board were to, uh, schedule a public hearing and put you in a procedural position so that the board can make a decision whether to approve or deny the request to abandon all of the alley that's described in the notice on your agenda. Um, at this point, I would recommend that you take further public comments, since it is another public hearing. This, although rescheduled, it is still a public hearing, so you should take public comment. Uh, and al- also from the applicant, if he is here, and there, there was one other person, I think, the other neighbor, whose name I don't remember, who also owns, owns lots, joined that alley. She had appeared and spoke at the last meeting. So when you make whatever decision you're going to make this morning, you would base that on all of the public comments, uh, that you have heard, uh, both at the original hearing and at this morning's hearing.
Okay, just to clarify, the way I understood it, uh, Mr. Sparks, the applicant, had sent us a letter asking us to, uh, give a time extension before we make a decision.
I've forgotten that, sorry. It wasn't on here, so I didn't know. I know I've been told there was gonna be a request, but I didn't see it on the agenda, so I didn't know maybe if it had been withdrawn or not, but.
Yes.
I, I, I had been told by Mr. Morone that, that request for a continuance had been made.
Yep.
So if that has not been withdrawn and is still on consideration, then the first thing you should do as a board is decide whether you want to grant the request to, to table this matter further. If you do grant that request, then I would recommend that you, you re-advertise the public hearing as opposed to just announcing verbally a, a, no date, time, and place certain.
Right, so if we don't announce a time and date and place certain, then we're not handling it all today. We would be doing that at a future meeting to set the time, date, and place, correct?
No, if, if you grant the request for tabling, then I would receive from the board instructions when you wanted to reschedule, uh, and then I would just go ahead and, and re-advertise and, and publish that advertisement for, for example, if it's the second meeting in February that you want to do that, then I would, uh, advertise for that, that second date, uh, second meeting in February.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I'm not trying to get unprocedural. I've seen a problem granting the request to extend it. It is right after the, the holidays. We were doing our best to move along, so we couldn't be tagged as trying to drag it out. So that's what we were doing. That's what I perceived we were doing anyway, to try to do it today. But if you want some extension, I have an issue with that, but you tell us how we should proceed.
Um, it is entirely up to the board whether you want to grant the request for a continuance, but I do think that is the first item that you need to address, so, so that you don't put it off to the end of, you know, public comment or anything of that nature. Um, that would require just a simple majority vote of the board by motion and vote, like you do everything else. Uh, just, just to say, you know, we, we grant the request for the continuance, and then give me some instructions on when you want to hold the rescheduled public hearing.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
May I, as, did you say it is time to have public comment?
No.
Oh, it's not?
No. They need to address the, may I, may I?
Yep.
They just need to address the procedural request for the continuance, and if they grant that, there would not be a public hearing or a public comment until the, the meeting is rescheduled at some future date. If they deny the request, then obviously they would move forward with the public hearing this morning, which would involve public comment.
But will it be re-advertized?
Yes.
Yes.
And who will pay for that?
The county typically pays for our advertisements.
All right, pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, continue this or, or table.
Table, all right.
And with that, we'll comment.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion to table by Commissioner Amson. We have a second by Commissioner Croom. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I completely will fall on the sword on this one, because, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I said I'm gonna fall on the sword on this one. I'm, uh, you know, I keep using the excuse of being new here, but in my haste, I kinda pushed the board to, let's just get it done, against, uh, uh, I guess you say, well, Mr. Morone was kinda advising to extend it. I wasn't really thinking about the holidays, um, you know, them being out of town. I wasn't really thinking about the holidays, um, you know, them being out of town, out of state, actually, and giving them time to prepare to come in. So I, again, I apologize for my, I guess, uh, overzealousness. But, uh, anyway.
Just trying to take care of business, Commissioner. All right. Any other discussion before we vote? On table, on table, this, this, sir?
Excuse me. I am still new. Um, but when we, when we doing this, you know, tabling, we want to make sure that we doing it correctly, you know? Eventually, yes, someone has, someone has to pay for it, but we rather do it the right way. You know what I mean? So that's, that's my comment on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, is, is part of your deliberations before you vote on this motion, if you would discuss, just giving me some idea when the board would prefer. It doesn't have to be part of the motion, but I would like some direction, uh, you know, February, March. I mean, how, how soon do y'all want this public hearing to be rescheduled?
What, I don't know what we have scheduled coming up.
I know the 19th, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I guess the 19th would be our next meeting. Is that correct? Or mid-January, 16th? I do know that we have workshop. So, yeah, we can't do it that way because we have to advertise for two weeks, right?
Yeah, this is an odd, uh, advertising requirement. Typically, it's 10 days for your standard ordinance, uh, period for advertisement. In this case, it's a full two, two weeks is required. So, um, I would say the second meeting in February, this is a suggestion for the board to consider. But I also say that I don't know what Mr. Sparks's schedule is or is not, so.
What's my schedule?
What, what, uh, Mr. Morone, are you still where you can hear us?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have anything on the schedule, on the schedule for the second meeting in February that we need to be aware of?
As you, so, no. And Commissioners, I would like you all to decide, is this something you want to do during a regular meeting? Or is this one of these things you want to do it at 5 o'clock because you expect, uh, more of the public in that area will want to speak on this?
I'm good with it either way. I just want to know, do we have anything scheduled before we start talking about a date? Do we have a whole lot going on, the second meeting in February?
You do not, not next month, not in February. You do not, sir.
Okay.
So any, any of those two, I'm, I'm with Attorney Schuler. Usually, we save our workshops and public hearings to the second meeting of every month.
Okay.
Do I need to amend my motion to say?
We can add it to the motion, yes.
I'll amend my motion for the second meeting in February. And also, I would like to do it in the afternoon. That way, no one can come back from the public and say that we tried to do this within a time period that nobody could have public input on.
5 o'clock?
5 o'clock, sounds good to me.
Okay. The second meeting in February at 5 o'clock.
All right, got it, Commissioners.
All right, Commissioner Amerson has amended his motion. Commissioner Crum, do you amend your second?
Yes.
All right, to reflect those, that statement. All right, the first and the second have been amended. Any other discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, um, yes, I know that we set these public hearings up and in plenty of time in advance. I feel like if the issue is important enough for an individual, they will make arrangements to be present. I get it, it's been after the holidays, I understand that. But I want to make sure that whoever's, you know, that, that date's good, um, but we can't go around asking everybody if they're available that day. Again, that's why we advertise it. That's why we, you know, say this is when it's going to be, time, place certain and everything. And then I, I feel like that if it's important enough, that individual will make time and accommodate their schedule for, for the, for the hearing. This is my personal opinion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Just so the board and the public is aware, the abandonment statute requires the adoption of a formal written resolution setting forth the specific date, time and place. So at the next meeting, I will be bringing you another resolution setting this new date, time and place for the advertisement of this public hearing.
Okay. All right. So we're to you, Attorney Schuler. Public hearings everywhere.
Okay. Um, the only item that I have was added at the, the beginning of the meeting and thank y'all for that. Uh, I try not to do things in that fashion. I try to get it to you in, in writing, you know, Friday before. But in this case, it seemed, you know, not necessarily unimportant, but it didn't seem that critical if, if I brought it up in this morning's meeting. So again, thank y'all for letting me do this. Two individuals down at Alligator Point have filed a notice of intent to sue the county. It's the notice of claim provisions under chapter 727 of Florida statutes. We have a six-month period to evaluate those claims and make a response. Uh, depending on what the response is, the two claimants may or may not file a lawsuit against us since the claims that are made involve, you know, alleged stormwater damages caused to their two properties, which include the failure of two seawalls. I need an engineer to provide a rebuttal to the report they have provided from Garlick Environmental Services. I originally spoke with and had been working through Dewberry over a course of time to get input from them about a response to the report. Ultimately, their attorney reported to me that this is, that this kind of consulting engineering services are outside of their normal wheelhouse of operations. Uh, and so my options are, I could either use, uh, the consulting engineer that was doing the inspections, which is AECom, which I'm told is like the biggest engineering firm in the world. But I don't know those people. I know Jack Cusman. So Jack is a local engineer. And since he's not a big worldwide engineering firm, I suspect his expenses are, are less than AECom, although I did not get an estimate from AECom. But, uh, I spoke with Jack on Wednesday of last week about this. He, he said he's willing and, and able to provide the, uh, the analysis and a report of, of responding to the Dan Garlick report. He said that would be at a cost of $6,500. Uh, I told him I would present that matter to the board, uh, for y'all's decision. But my recommendation is that y'all hire Mr. Cusman's. We're going to need an engineer to respond to this report at some point, particularly if they file a lawsuit. So I, I would like to get someone, uh, with the correct credentials. And, and Mr. Cusman's is a licensed Florida engineer and he can provide the engineering analysis and response to these claims that have been made by the two landowners at Alligator Point. But, um, if the board is, is agreeable to my request, then, then you would approve that by motion and vote. And if you're not, you would deny it by motion and vote of the board.
Pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second when I have a question.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward, please.
So this, this money, the $6,500 for the, for the fee, is that something in litigation that the person that's, I guess, suing us can have to bear the cost of if we win?
You do have the ability to try to recoup your costs as part of litigation. So we could certainly ask the court, um, to consider, assuming there's a lawsuit and assuming we prevail, then we could ask the court, uh, to provide us with the, the cost of that defense if we're successful. Um, the, my, my goal frankly, you know, I don't think the Garlick report is, is, is very credible because it's providing essentially an engineering analysis and they're not an engineering firm. However, I think if we can get a good engineering analysis, we may be able to, you know, perhaps prevent a lawsuit, but who knows?
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else for Attorney Schuler, Commissioners? Uh, it might, it might be it, it might not be it.
I just, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I sent you an email and you responded. So I just want to make sure that we're looking into that and you'll get back to me if I can be of any assistance.
Before we?
Well, I wasn't expecting that quick, but.
Well, I figured it'd be a short meeting. It's, it's not a very complicated answer. But it'll be preliminary because I, all I have to do on those preliminary matters would be the public records out of the property appraisers office. Seems like the Commissioner, so you know, what's apparently happened is somebody down there at Alligator, uh, Carabel Beach has put up some, some sort of signage, most likely saying, no trespassing private property. Uh, there, there is a point where our public beach does end and private property does begin. I mean, this is, uh, something I, I think's come up before Commissioner Sanders. I'm not sure about that. Maybe he has.
Several, several times.
And, and so to the extent it's private property, then people have a right to, I guess, it's their private property. They want to put up a sign on the sandy beach that they own. And there, there are other private beaches throughout the county, particularly the rural St. George Island. So it's, it's not a, a new issue by any stretch. And, you know, people are entitled to, you know, keep the public off of their private property. I wouldn't let people setting up picnic tables in my backyard either, so. But I don't know where that line is in this case. But I'll look at it and I'll, I'll get a response back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not mean high water though, right? It's on the private side of mean high water. I mean, the mean high water and to the water.
Anything below mean high water would be public, yes.
Yeah, okay. Want to be sure.
But we don't have many that's walking on the mean high water on the other private beaches in the county.
So the, the most appropriate way to put signage, if you want to put signage, is probably running east and west, not north and south, because the public's got a right to get below the high tide line. On, on the sandy beaches in Franklin County. Other than the plantation, but they still can walk down those sandy beaches, below the high tide line.
That's correct.
Whichever one that is. They still have a right to it. Any other thing for Attorney Schuler then? All right, Commissioner comments?
I just want to say, oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morone, you're on?
Yes, sir.
I figured out one thing, but the other thing I had was, uh, can you give me information on your, your rural county day that's on the 24th and 25th of January?
All right, Commissioners, this is something we had talked about before, about participating in Rural Counties Day. Um, it would take a, an effort that would include, uh, perhaps Mrs. John Solomon because it's basically, we, we would have to have someone to man a tent. And Commissioner Amerson, what did, uh, uh, what did it tell you from Opportunity, Florida? That what Color County already does, uh, oysters. So we would have to do shrimp, something to that effect when we're in the airport board meeting. So basically, it's a tent that we, we man, um, and it's up there in Tallahassee. I think it's for the day. I don't know what the second day is of, uh, Commissioner Crum, but I'll look into that. But, um, I'm kind of, you know, the, the board hasn't participated in this for quite some time. Do we want to move forward with that?
I think so. I think it'd be great.
I thought they'd already had.
Yeah, no, I don't think, we haven't done it since I've been here.
I have.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about as, as, as a county, making sure we have a county booth there and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, I've attended one of them before, but I haven't, we've never had a county booth. I think it'd be a great idea. I might not be able to be there both days, but I'm going to try to be there at least once.
And walk all the stone to oysters?
That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
But we have the name, too, that it's not open, right?
I, I know a guy that'll donate some shrimp to offset the cost of that re-advertising. So there we go, saving county money.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that. Contact you guys individually because, and then I'll talk to John about it. And by the next meeting, uh, we already have to have everything in place, but I'll, I'll make sure I have something in the next meeting so you know what we're doing, okay?
Sounds good. Interacts, Commissioner?
Thank you. The other one was, uh, January 17th. I wrote down it was the legislative day.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner, Chairman and Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Crum wants to attend with you. I know you guys usually go as, as a group, a contingency to see the, the, uh, I'm sorry, to see the senator and to see the representative. And so, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, we can discuss setting up those appointments as soon as we possibly can.
Yes.
And I'll have, uh, Mrs. Courtney Banksen arranged for overnight stay because I advised Commissioner Crum that he doesn't want to leave Apalachicola early that morning to try and get up there, get a parking spot and get into the fray. You kind of want to spend the night there. It gives you a, a slight advantage for parking and for access.
It does. And, and, and Michael, actually, any of us that want to go can go. It's great for all of us to go. The reason Commissioner Ward and I have went in the last several years, well, she's went to every one of them, I think, since she's got elected. But I was on the fact board of directors after Commissioner Sanders was. So now that we're both on the fact board of directors, we're both planning on trying to attend, but it's wide open for all of us. And I think that the more of us can be in the room, the, uh, the greater it's going to look with our representative and with our senator.
I had, I had intent to go on the 17th, but I, I wasn't going to spend the night before. I was just going to drive up that morning. And, uh, that's the reason why you had to make that.
Well, just keep in mind, Mr. Chairman, that, that day before, we have a pretty long meeting. We have a workshop at 5:00, so we won't be able to leave till after all that's done anyway, so. So just have Courtney, um, when she's making our accommodations, let her know that we won't be arriving to the hotel till probably later on that evening. And I think the Small County Coalition thing is, we're not going to be able to attend that because we'll be traveling. So if you would, let Mr. Doolan know that we will be unavailable for that dinner as well.
I will.
Yeah, they're doing that pretty early, aren't they? Yeah, so Commissioner Crum, this is a, so Association of Counties legislative day. The intent is we're going to have, uh, those couple of days that all the different commissions in the state will be meeting there at the Capitol together as one, as one unit, you know, the, all, the whole association, which I think every county's an association, isn't it? 67 counties, so. That, that's, it's sponsored by the Association of Counties, which you learn a lot more about, I assure you.
In, in the Florida Association of Counties, I think all the counties do belong, but in Small County, no.
Yeah, that's what it is, legislative day.
They'll, they'll join you in with a flock.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a very, it's a very good and useful organization.
It is.
It has really helped us and I'm so grateful that many years ago, we saw the need to do that. And, uh, and I'll, myself, myself and Mr. Clarence is one of the, Mr. Clarence Williams is one of the first members to start doing stuff like that. And that really brought awareness of Franklin County's problem to this day. It sure did. And, um, and I'll, so it's very important that you regain that cohesiveness with all the people and all. Large group.
So that morning, they have stuff the night before, but that morning of legislative day, they'll actually have like a debriefing, uh, time where we're all together and they have different presentations. But it's part of the process that we started after the last session was over with. We started working through legislative policies that we as a state association are going to push to the senators and the, and the representatives. So, you know what I mean? So, and we'll be, we'll, we'll have those honed down and they'll be able to hand you pamphlets or flyers and saying, hey, here are your talking points. These are the things we're trying to do from the association this year with the legislative, you know, delegation. So that's what it'll be about. Then the afternoon will be the meetings. Individual meetings with the senator from the House of Representatives. All right. Anything else? Some Commissioner comments? Commissioner Ward?
I, I was just going to say, I hope everybody had a good Christmas and Happy New Year and looking forward to 2024. Lots of great things.
Anything else? Commissioner comments?
No, I would just say the same thing. It, it, it was a great holiday season and, uh, I'm kind of sad to see it end because of family, you know, and that's what it's all about.
It is.
You know, it's about family, being with family. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for carrying us on through. And, and, and we're seeing a bright new future with the year 2024.
Yes, we are. So our next meeting is, uh, the 16th of January, 9 o'clock. Meeting adjourned.